It is 6:30. I will call our Monday, April 7th meeting to the board. We'll call Joel.
Here?
Yeah, Sarah.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
No, here. Sarah. Here.
Here.
Dr. Soler, has our meeting been duly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Please join me in public.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can read it. The Mount Horup Area School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Ding dong. Number two, would someone like to make a motion to approve or revise our agenda? Does she approve? Motion by Carly, seconded by Joel, to approve our agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two B, approval of our March 17th regular board meeting and closed meeting minutes. Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Tom, seconded by Carly. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Two C, approval of March 31st board workshop and closed session meeting minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Somebody.
Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Joel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number three, addressing the board, building good news as students.
Yeah. That'll be us over here at the intermediate center, so Satchel, now we get to come over and stand in front of this board. Alright, well, I'm very proud to present Satchel Benzeng, one of our fifth graders in Ms. Young and Ms. Whitick's classes. And he is just a fantastic example of the awesome students we have at the intermediate center. When I reached out to some of the staff, here are some of the things that they said about him. Satchel is always super positive. He works well with his classmates and is always willing to help them out. They said that he is a bright light at the intermediate center. A daily role model, listens well, participates in class, works hard on tasks. An infectious smile. Did we get to see your smile? Positive energy, always showing the values of the Viking way by making thoughtful choices and leading by example. He has a great sense of humor, very friendly, a good friend, and a natural leader. So, Satchel is an awesome student at the IC and we are really proud to have him as a student. Proud to have him as a Viking, awesome.
Satchel, can you tell us about your fan club over here? A lot of people who love you, a great team. Who are all these good people?
My dad, my sister Vanessa, that freshman, my little brother Rico, I'm gonna go to school next year with my dad, my little sister Kida, that's three years, and my mom.
Well, behind every strong student is a very strong family. And we're so grateful to have all of them here today as a small way of commemorating this special event. We have this certificate for you. Do you have a nice place in your room that you can maybe put that up? And then I have a little Viking pin for you as well. We hope that you wear that proudly. Would you be willing to take a picture with us so that we can put you in the newspaper? And I can bring your family with us to take that picture? And then I have a friend in Mr. Schlingen. He helps people at the intermediate center as well. He's one of our board members. Can we take a picture together? Let's do that. What do you say? We take a break for a minute and we'll be right back, okay?
Other schools like to get in and they're like, "Do we take those?" I'm like, "Everybody else does." They're like, "Alright, go on then." Dude, I don't know who's in our cap and who's not. Just depends on which sport. It depends on who's in whose cap. I'm just like, "Oh my gosh." And it says, and make it look like it's a plus one. So like, alright. We can discount snacks.
Like when we played club too, my sister played west. My dad went to west. He's like, "I know, but I played soccer for west." She sent off this funny picture. She says, "Dad's okay." Yeah, she went touring. We got like, "I can tour against the Lavalas." And apparently my coach liked to say, "I'm like, Mom, you were obviously singing out a lot of stories." You're not these church kids.
Oh, we sure do. I forgot my list, so I'll see what I can remember. So, just before spring break, we had fantastic turnout for conferences. So, so many of our families were able to join us. And that is something that staff who are new to the district always take note of. They can't believe our awesome turnout. So, you can't take that for granted. Also, a lot of support in the Scholastic Book Fair. So, that was a nice fundraiser for our library and for teachers' libraries in the classroom. We had our fourth grade music program. That was quite a hit. Really, they went with our theme of belonging and really focused on the monthly messages we have in our morning meeting related to belonging. We also are getting, we kicked off forward exam today. So, both fourth and fifth grade started and it was smooth sailing. So, that's one of those cases where no news is the best news. Technology worked great. Plans were organized that all went very smoothly. And then, as we look forward, we have another third grade music program at the end of the month. And we're getting ready for Earth Day. And we started the fourth quarter today. And so, time is really flying, but we're looking forward to a lot of good fourth quarter events to round out the year. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Three B, citizen comments.
We have a couple of people who'd like to speak tonight. First, this is Mr. Kelly Brock. Could you hear me, Mr. Brock?
Hi. So, I'll just speak from here. Once again, I'm here to advocate against some of the changes being considered with evidence-based grading concept. I'm gonna take a little different approach for my comments tonight. I'm gonna focus on culture. And the culture that I believe that this change is gonna end up instilling in the kids at Mount Horup schools. With the movement away from the educational standbys of homework being expected on a regular basis and graded, so holding people accountable. And with the movement away from you have to study for a test because guess what? You get one time to put your best foot forward. We're gonna be creating a culture of laissez-faire and lack of accountability. One where my daughter can scribble whatever she wants on a piece of paper and put it on the teacher's desk and for her homework, it doesn't really matter. Because guess what? That homework doesn't count for anything. And one where if I could poorly on a test, hm, it doesn't really matter 'cause I could just retake it. Now, why do I care so much that this is my third time speaking in front of this board? With my hair on fire almost every time? That's a great question. Little bit about my work. I'm a consultant. So, my job is to help my clients, businesses all over the country, implement technology so they can improve their business, right? So, not much connection to homework, so far at least. But here's the kicker. A lot of the clients I work with, when I go in there and we start working through a lot of their problems, it's not antiquated software, hardware. It's not business process. It's not all these other things. It's accountability. And I've spent, my current client, I have spent two years of my time working with them to help them build a better culture of accountability. And over the last eight days alone, I have gotten these two comments. "Our culture needs to seriously change if employees just did what was expected of them." "I don't wanna have to do other people's work for them." So, these are comments I get every day. And the work product that these guys are getting, it's from engineers with masters and PhDs. It's not from, you know, anybody on the street. This is people with significant education backgrounds. And I'm dealing with one individual work product right now. And it was, my client, they had 539 times it was submitted. And guess what? 439 times out of that, it had to go through rework, rework, retest. Kind of similar, huh? $90,000 worth of labor was lost. And I guess I'm out of time, but I want you to consider that impact on these changes. And I'd really like to see more input from the board to me and my wife. We've sent emails. We've only heard from Dr. Soler now. I'm disappointed in that. He's accountable to you, not him being accountable. Not you being accountable to him. And that's really, should change. Please. Thank you.
We have another guest speaker, and that is Katie Schroeder.
Amy's gonna speak.
Yeah.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, thank you. Amy Lyle.
Hello. Maybe a little slow. I did some gardening yesterday. So, hi, I'm Amy. I'm from PFLAG and I'm here with some of our fellow PFLAG members just to say thank you again so much to our board for continuing to support all students and be such an inclusive, wonderful place. And I'm actually really glad to see Ms. Howgie here 'cause it takes me back in our family's journey to, Ms. Howgie was the first person we approached in supporting our youngest child, who's now a junior in high school. And she's just doing so awesome. And Ms. Howgie just didn't hesitate at all, even though we were all still figuring things out at that time. And just really have so much gratitude to you for that. Yeah, it really meant a lot and continues to mean a lot. And so, I just wanted to say that and also that I just appreciate the quality education that this district has provided our kids and continues to provide. We have a freshman in college in DC who's absolutely thriving and has, you know, got a fantastic education here. And part of, I think he's got, but like, part of what helped him was every student being treated as an individual and seen as an individual. And accommodations needed to be made for whatever reason, that that really helped him maintain his confidence. And he's, he's really performing really well. And so, I trust this district to do what's right by our students and just, without hesitation. So, thank you very much.
Alrighty, three C, school news.
Hello, would you like to start? First things first, the band show is this week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We have three shows and I'm pretty sure that there's still tickets. If anyone wants to go, should go. It's gonna be really awesome. And you get to see me embarrass myself a little bit. We also have the National Honor Society Blood Drive this Wednesday. I believe it's Wednesday. I don't know if you guys can sign up, but if you can, you should because giving blood is great. Also, spring sports are fully in swing at this point. And I think a lot of my peers and I are missing spring break, but we're looking forward to the next one, so.
You're so right. Spring sports are underway. I was just amazed by our soccer team that took hold of Sunny P at Sunny P on Saturday, I think it was. We won. One student had four goals and a couple of, I mean, just they were on fire. Boy, you have kids on the team, don't you, or you had?
On the boys' team, not the girls'.
Okay, yeah.
Not yet.
Absolutely amazing, yeah. Today was a big day for Mount Horup and tomorrow will be as well because we are having our final credentialing through the International Baccalaureate Career Program. And you don't need me to tell you that we have just an absolutely amazing high school staff that has been preparing for this day now for at least two years. And they just continue to make this district proud. I suspect that we will have a very successful announcement soon. I don't wanna count my chickens before they hatch, but I will tell you that this is a result of a long journey that starts with our board, allowing us to move forward with a vision and aligning resources in order to make that happen. Lots of training. And I think our, I know our students are gonna be the benefactors of that. So, I'm grateful for this final step in an important process. You said Viking Band Show. We talked about Forward Exam, so I won't talk about that. But I will just make one more comment with regard to another, yet another public engagement session that we'll be hosting next Wednesday night. It's around evidence-based grading. The real purpose, I think, is to dispel a number of the misnomers, some of which sadly we heard here this evening. Suffice to say, we wanna do everything we can to share with you the status of our good work. The team's good work, get feedback from people about their experience thus far, and then continue to evolve in our practice and our instruction based upon research. And there is a great deal of research in the movement that we are making. So, encourage everybody, 6:00 PM next Wednesday night, High School is gonna host us over in the cafeteria. Is it 6:30 or 6?
6:30.
Like I said, it's 6:30.
Board, other school news?
I have two. This week, Thursday through Saturday, the middle schooler who's your prom sorority are going to state. So, that's very exciting. And then Friday, if you're feeling fancy, we have the PTO Fancy Pants Dance from 6:30 to 7:00. Yep, took a little while to settle on the name that worked, but it all works. Then we'll have a silent auction and there's a lot of good stuff. If you go to our Facebook page, they just keep posting stuff every day of new stuff we'll have. Your board, it's $2 for the family, so it's pretty cheap. And you can get all the glow stuff. It's all in my bag right now. You're so inclined.
Other school news?
I have some stuff. I was able to attend a couple of things back in March after our last meeting. I went to the Spring Pops concert with the high school choirs. And that was really a fun concert to go to and applaud all the singers at that event. And on March 20th, I attended the FFA banquet and that was a nice evening where a lot of awards were given and scholarship winners were recognized through the FFA. There was a lot of people. Finally, field trip season is here for the third graders. I was able to go along with one or two classes. I only went to the Planetarium in Madison and then to Haven's Petting Zoo. You can imagine there was a lot of, a lot of happy kids running around. Not the new camels, which are just two months old. The kindergarten concert is this Friday at 2:00 PM. And then, there's a lot of testing going on this week. Forward testing at the IC, early reading screeners at the LC and PC, and some middle school testing, all happening either now or in early April. So, have your kids rested. Ready for school.
Anyone else? Alright, moving on to our personnel transactions.
Board, there's a couple of quick items to bring to your attention. First, there's an addendum. And secondly, I wanna thank all of the staff who have agreed to participate. As a coach or a sponsor, you'll see their information also included for next year's planning purposes. A lot of hours goes in, you don't need me to tell you that, to help support our young people and co in extracurricular activities. Thank you, my friends.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve? Motion to approve with the addendums. Second. Motion by Leah, seconded by Sarah, to approve our personnel transactions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number five, our consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull up to discuss? If someone would like to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Adam, seconded by Tom, to approve our consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number six, discussion items. Committee member reports. Tom, would you like to start with building grounds and transportation?
I would love to. We didn't have a meeting last month. It was during spring break. But we got a written report from the teams, Dave and Brian. So, I'll just go over what they sent, full of whack fashion, fully staffed. And some of the staff was able to take some vacation during the spring break, which is nice for them and their families. Hopefully, the snow season is finally gone. They had some warm temperatures, so they were able to bring the cooling systems up and all the systems fired up and are working with minimal effort. So, that's good to hit the ground running with those. The grounds team is working hard on projects and getting the fields ready for all the spring sports that are starting. On the transportation side, they are hiring a new bus driver to take over vacant AM and PM routes, completing all the licensing requirements. And the regional meetings were held for the Wisconsin School Bus Association during the first week in March. And that was good for networking, industry updates, and learning about new technologies. And there's gonna be some new updates from the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration regarding federal medical cards, which will have an impact on us a little bit, but we should be good for that. So, that was the update from them. And then, during spring break, I was lucky enough, like, I took some time to visit with Jeff Bolden and the IC team. And I'll just go over a couple of the things that we talked about and I think I'll bring the rest to committee at the end of April. The boilers, Boiler 3 is down and we've discussed that a little bit already, but just a reminder of that. There's one railing that needs some attention. I think the staff are gonna get that taken care of right away as that's kind of a safety hazard. I think the rest of it, I'll take to committee first before. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. We met a long time ago, back in March, beginning of March. Couple of things, there was a donation that we considered. A scholarship was, $2,500 was donated from Donna and Roger Schneider for a Nicholas Day Memorial Scholarship, which was lovely. And we always appreciate any families that are willing to set up scholarships like that for our students. We went over the budget calendar as we are wont to do. And everything seems to be on track. Let's scout, make sure that we don't miss a thing down there. We went over taxes received. We're right on target with where we expect to be at this time of year with a little over 70% of our total expected taxes received at this point. And then, we had a very robust discussion around revenue limits and what that does to the budget. A couple of light bulb moments for me as a second-year board member, if you will, is how little impact the per-revenue or per-student revenue increase would have on our district simply because of how everything is calculated, some of the minimums and things like that. As well as the fact that as we look at declining enrollment, the, it's the second year that's the concern. The first year, there are some things in there. So, when we look at budgets and everything related to that, we don't see the full impact of a declining enrollment till year two of that decline, that decline in enrollment. So, as you look forward, that can be some potential headwinds going forward here. As always, we appreciate those robust discussions because we have a master at figuring out how that stuff all works, so we appreciate that.
Thank you. Carly, you wanna talk about safety most?
Yeah, we met a while ago also, March 17th. And we spent a good amount of the update talking about, or that meeting talking about some outreach that we've received from the Madison School District regarding the WIAH changes in their policies around inclusion of all students in athletics. Just spent a bit of time catching up on some of the efforts that Carly had made, that Dr. Soler has made around reaching out to that group about that policy and reaching out to other districts and kind of talking through what our approach is gonna be in the meantime. For now, we're, we're gonna keep an eye on legislation. There's state legislation pending. We'll keep an eye on that and consider whether, as that advances, if it makes sense to do anything there. But otherwise, we're just kind of in a holding pattern. For our equity update, at the time that Brian gave us the update that the focus at that time was looking at the website and reframing the wording on the website, the language on the website to be more descriptive with what our policy is and what we're actually doing, focusing on a commitment to belonging. We talked during our mental health and safety update, again, at the time, we were just talking about getting started on planning for how to mark the upcoming recurrence of May 1st. Sources of strength, our student group was pretty, been pretty involved in that. And let's see. There'll be a letter going out to families, letting them know what to expect. And we talked about how they were gonna be focusing both on, not just the day itself, but the days leading up to that, anticipating anxieties and behaviors at that point and then also the days after. We talked a little bit about the Speak Up, Speak Out program in the Office of Safety and how we've been in touch with them. They give them some feedback on that process that might make things a little smoother. that might make things a little smoother. Um, and then we had a Title IX update where we, I think it's similar things that we've offered before, we talked about the courts revoked the current law, went back to twenty-twenty, and that the, the major changes and the definition, um, it refers back to the, the old definition of sexual harassment, which is a harder bar to clear because the conditions are all and instead of, instead of or, so. And they're, um, in the minutes, if you wanna do the specifics. That's it. We meet again on the twenty-first.
Thank you, Carly. Adam, did the Village Park, Brick and Forestry Commission meet?
We did. I had one slightly question for Carly.
Oh, yeah.
Just that Speak Up, Speak Out.
Yeah.
Is it, are there, is it a pretty short list of things that you did? I'm just curious, recommendations on improve that?
Um, I think it had to do with the information that we were getting from the original message was remain on feedback and how they could improve giving us the better information to act upon.
It'd be very receptive. I invited them to come to one of our administrative council meetings and we were able to refine them a number of suggestions and they were very amenable to it.
Great. That just seems like such a valuable tool, so I love that we're helping shape them. Great, and it was a Parks and Rec meeting and uh, the committee approved two hundred thousand dollars in playground equipment for Grundle. It's gonna replace that current area, it's about the same footprint, a little bit shifted over. Um, big gift from the Summer Fella Committee to help make that happen and one of the cool things that uh, Jeff Gorman did was to put it out to the community on the final selection of some of the elements that'll be out there and got some initial response, so looking at uh, something they'll do again for some other future development. Luckin Park is obviously, uh, I'm just calling it Luckin Park, Luckin Farm, but the parkland that gets there is that gets developed, they're gonna be tapping into JSD of Verona and will be a whole lot of committee input, that was one of the main reasons why JSD was selected. So we uh, planted the seed a little bit about maybe having a youth committee, um, that could help with some of the selection of structures and approach, obviously within budget, within choices, but it has to have some ownership from kids on what the, what the park land area will look like there. Um, there's gonna be a tour of Grandma Foster and Grundle coming at the next meeting, uh, by the committee and obviously anyone who wants to join on that, that'll be the twenty-first, twenty-eighth, uh, being the fourth Tuesday. And uh, the only other thing that that prompted in my mind, and this was just more of a thought for now, was uh, if and how and when we might be able to involve students in the PTO construction process, that's any way, even if it's given the wiggle on that or if it's having them help out in any way in terms of the construction of that building.
Alrighty, any questions, Brad? Moving on, six B, information and advocacy. Report co-curricular participation and opportunities. Brian and Sarah.
Thanks for having us tonight. Uh, in looking at not only our board strategic plan and the well legal, which outlines just increasing that sense of belonging through co-curricular participation, the board about also, uh, really looked at that school sponsored activities and that, that annual participation for our middle school and high school students as a power goal as well. So we're covering two, two things with, with one stone, right? Two bricks and one stone. So, um, I'll take the, the first part and then Brian's gonna continue with the second part. So when we look at that indicator for, of the board strategic plan, that co-curricular participation opportunities, we decided to go back and look at our DBI people non-discrimination self-evaluation that we presented to the board a year ago, April twenty twenty-four. Um, and within that plan, part of it was looking at, again, the, the participation, the participation of students and, and who they were, it was, it was disaggregated, but we really wanted to focus on tonight, the action items, because it pertains to the board power goal. So some of the action items, the first one, uh, was looking at um, our athletic activities director, Colleen Nessheim, sharing that, that demographic information with advisors and with coaches, so they know who's engaged and who's not engaged. Um, from that, Colleen then um, talked with all the fall athletic advisors and coaches during her self-coaches meeting. And then she's also in the spring planning to conduct a similar review with, with all advisors and going into the campus and pulling up that data again to see who is and who is not at, at the table for our academics and athletics. The second action item from the people non-discrimination report, um, had to do with having students be more knowledgeable of what's out there, what's available to them. So we know that we have an, an activity fair for freshmen in August, September time, that's been very successful. So the team wanted to expand that to make sure all students, maybe they're new to the school district, maybe they come to here, maybe they just have an interest now, um, are knowledgeable of what's there. Um, so prior to each season, she and Kelly Richardson send out an email to students informing them of what the athletic activities are and what the clubs are, so students know what is, is coming up. Um, and then having that slideshow which fall during advisory is important as well for students to know what, what's available to them. And the third item is, is pretty cool, Brian's gonna talk about that one.
So one, and one of the areas that we really look at when we did the report was which group of students are not able to participate, or which age, which group of students is not participating. Um, and what we really found is for sure that our students with significant disabilities had a zero participation rate. Um, when we looked at neighboring communities, we did find some Prairie, a couple of years back, had started an adaptive sports program, uh, focusing on three sport, three seasons, fall winter, um, and spring, that are just like a quick six-week season where they compete against neighboring districts in wiffle ball, field hockey and indoor soccer. Um, and so our plan originally was to try and start up this spring, um, and we are officially gonna be starting next fall, um, with indoor soccer, um, but we are going to collaborate with Verona, because we don't have enough students specifically within our district to start. Um, so we're gonna have a collaborative effort, um, with Verona, and so it'll be Verona-Mount Horn, and we'll have a, an adaptive sports league, uh, for just the fall and spring sport. We're not gonna do um, field hockey to start with, so kind of stick with the two that are like the easiest to start out with, um, and then see if we wanna build from there. It's a pretty cool opportunity, we're excited about.
The next section of our, do you have any questions before we move on? The next section of our report really looks at information that was pulled from a really nice survey that Colleen and Cody put together to provide to students in late fall, early winter, um, about the school sponsored athletics and activities. We have about, a little more than fifty percent of students, um, participate in that survey. And in figure one here, you can see, this, this is self-reported, so what students think they're doing or what they're involved in, so keep that in mind, because we'll have actual data up in the campus a little bit later. But in figure one, you can see, um, we have students, we have a good amount of students, about twenty-two percent of students, and at least one activity. And then we can see that moving all the way up. Um, it's amazing that some students are nine, ten, eight activities, um, keeping their academic lives going as well, it's pretty neat to see.
So we have a nice baseline of that self-reported piece now, that we can send the survey out to collect that data over time. We also wanted to know, uh, Cody and Colleen have many nice questions in there, and one of the, um, other questions was, you know, why, if you don't, why? What's, what's holding you back? Um, I know it's hard to see within the graphic itself, so in the paragraph above, figure two, we, we outlined what those choices were, that range from health concerns to family reasons to work commitments to maybe lack of information or don't know anyone else. Um, and we can see from figure two, um, that maybe not knowing anyone else and lack of information were the higher reasons, uh, why students maybe aren't participating. So again, it goes back to that education piece, um, and then maybe making, helping students make some connections with peers is also another piece that, um, the administrative team will have to figure through. Again, they, they just started diving into this data and will continue to look at it throughout the spring into the summer. But, then we can pull from campus and have the true data.
The actual data, right? Um, and then that's, this is when we look at grade six, grade twelve, for students who are actually participating in a school sponsored event. Um, and then those results look a little bit different. Uh, when we look at those, it's about sixty-eight, what was it, sixty, yeah, sixty-eight percent, yep. Um, sixty-eight percent of middle and high school students who are participating. Um, the average kind of got thrown down a little bit. Sixth grade has a lot less opportunities to be able to participate, so if you took them out of the mix, then it brings it up to seventy-three percent for seventh through twelfth grade. And then you can also see again, you know, we have a lot of students who are into or more events, um, participation, um, and so you can kind of see by grade, um, where we're at and the participation. And so it, it's exciting to be able to do this and we've talked about, um, you know, this goal is really about the whole child, right? And it's not focusing on academics, but it's focusing on how we engage in belonging, how do we have students who are, feel connected to our school and being involved in a school sponsored activity is, is a main reason on how we can accomplish that. And so through this power goal and through this report, this is the first time we're doing it, so now we have baseline data. Um, and so now we'll keep track of this and how we move forward and how we can continue to look at ways to increase opportunity and participation for students.
Anyone have questions?
The, the, uh, slideshow that the students are receiving, assuming that's available to the campus, the parents as well?
I don't know if it's available to the campus, it has break courses, but the website you're thinking?
Or website, somewhere where parents can go or be directed to go.
We can ask that question. That'd be a fair question, that'd be easy to post.
Yeah, that would be helpful, just parent conversations. And then for the not participating piece, is there, I mean, I know you guys are working on, on the education side of it and things, but are there some other low hanging fruits out there where we look at cost prohibitive, we look at, um, transportation, some of that kind of stuff that we as a community, not necessarily a district, but then we could look at our community partners that we could get some help for some of those kinds of things?
Yeah. Yes, we just need to know who, who kiddo is that right?
And I know this is the very first, so, but that's kind of looking for the low hanging fruit there to say, hey, these are, these are some easy ones, along with the harder or longer term worker in the education.
Thank you. Great ideas.
How do you figure out what's a school sponsored event in infinite campus to pull this number? Cause I know like, I have kids in, in school sponsored stuff and it's not an infinite campus, or at least not as a parent, I can't see it.
Yeah, so, so if they're involved in a love interact or any type of, I don't know, school sanctioned is the correct term, but um, at the bottom of students' schedule, infinite campus, it has like class officer and all those pieces, like NHS, all those things that kids are in, that Kelly Richardson keeps track of in the rosters and attendance and enrollment, well, more so not attendance, but rosters, so.
Not all of them. Cause like Orion, for example, is in every choir except the girl choir, those don't show up like on his roster.
And then some of those may be, let's look into that, some of them may be more academic and a ready part of it, but that's, that's a different.
Like if you count choir as one, then yes, but if you were to count like.
Matto girl or.
Right, you were to count all of those, like we, I bet the numbers jumped.
Sure.
Um, same with like middle school, oh, maybe it's a middle school, I don't know. I didn't see it as a middle school before, but I know some of that stuff.
Yeah, like with choir, chamber choir. After school, what's after in schools.
Any of the music ones show up, they've never online. Right, yeah, so, like it depends on how, like, how do we wanna actually track the data, like, cause those are school sponsored events. And then the number of students in two plus thing could super increase.
That's fair, yeah, we're only as good as the data we get, so, so getting those rosters um, is a piece of it. Also, we have, I'm sure those are more school sponsored events, but sometimes we have activities that are provided by advisors that are out of goodness of their heart versus official. So we're also, we've been better at teasing those out and making sure we have more official things and data, but we can go back to the music piece and figure that piece out too.
Cause I know we also have kids who can't fit choir, I know choir, for example, cannot fit in their schedule. So they attend these extra ones, so now they, they're not in our numbers, cause they're not in choir, so.
That's fair, thank you for that.
Same with like the middle schoolers, they have fiddle band, jazz band, seven name choir, I don't know what that was actually called. Early choir. Early choir, right? So like, some of those, again, it would, it would change our numbers. To me, they're all different, like the kids are going to these things, right, like getting up at seven AM, so I feel like they should be recognized.
So I guess like, then if we're gonna do that, if we're gonna think about that data, we gotta define what is, what's the purpose behind this, right? It's to make additional connections within the community, so it would be a school related activity that allows for additional connection, I think would be the, if that's, if we're gonna make a change like we're gonna talk.
I take a note, one of the things I'd like to do is talk with our registrar, who helps us call all this data together and he'd be happy to, to see what's, what's the holdup, why are we not getting the music piece, because to your point, those numbers only go up. Music staff is amazing.
Well, especially for those kids who like can't get, get into their schedule, who are taking it, like before school or after school or whatever, then I mean, those numbers would change.
And the year's not over, so we can adjust our baseline for this year, right?
It'd also be great if parents know if my kid shows up at seven AM choir, then I could see.
We don't take a ten percent chance of that part.
Any other wondrous questions, suggestions?
When you, when you did this assessment, and maybe this wasn't part of the filtering on this aspect of it, but I think about sort of, uh, you know, what swaths of the student population maybe just aren't covered, and the thing that comes to mind is esports, when that came up, and how many kids maybe that weren't as involved in other things, decided, yeah, that's for me. Um, did you have any observations that way, like, hey, here's something we should really think about offering?
The way the power goals were in.
Yeah.
We did not at this point.
Yep.
Doesn't even can't.
Yep.
Not at this point for this first report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not like we can offer a lot of things.
Yep.
I realize that.
Yep.
I did just happen to peek and like jazz band, corral, fiddle band, those are all listed in kids' schedules, even though they take place outside of this school day.
Maybe they're in the middle school, but like the high school, the high school I didn't see them.
My laptop, now I'm gonna spot you.
Right? And I could, I could be missing it, right? Like these things I just scroll for days to see what the kids are involved in, so it's possible, but like, like ICFFA is in here and I see.
Yeah, there's, there's inter-curricular versus co-curricular, which sometimes I think there's some, right, like what those two different definitions mean and how that looks in here, could be something we could, we could look at and make sure that it's what we want.
It's gotta be for something, is it just the right?
Right, right.
We can, we can definitely circle back, that's easy.
Any other questions?
That's, I got right here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, John, to both of you.
Thank you, team.
Thank you. Undergrated to Colleen for helping with the survey.
Brian, you get to stay and talk about her.
Yeah, I'll probably have Cody and Paul come down too.
Oh, okay.
Come on. I wanna stand over yourself, so.
Now you also have to.
Yeah.
I got sucked in. It's good leaving.
No, we're not, but it's not too hot.
I think, you know, this, this topic was supposed to kind of go from a board workshop, right? So kind of thinking about it from a discussion standpoint around looking at smart technology devices in schools, um, and constantly looking and redefining how we're using the process, using them in our schools academically, but also using them in a social standpoint, and what makes the most sense, um, with what we're learning, what we're learning about kids, what we're seeing in data, um, and how that really affects overall learning and social and emotional growth. So, we've kind of, you know, where we are, which is that K5 is locked and put away. Simple. Um, six twelve is no devices bell to bell, um, unless they're used for instructional purposes, um, and there's flexibility at the high school during non-structured academic learning times, so, it's kind of simple.
I think locked and put away is a little loose because they don't have lockers, right? That's true, you can't take it to school till you have a locker you can put in it.
That's true. They're in the cubbies.
Right, they're cubbies, they're cubbies in put away. They're not in their pockets, that's what I wanna know.
And so really, when we continue to look at this, it's why are we continuing to look at it, right? And what we're concerned about, and it's again, related directly to the Board of Education Power Goals, we want to engage students in connectedness, we want a more focused learning environment, and we want a reduction in bullying, harassment and intimidation. environment, and we want a reduction in bullying, harassment, and intimidation. We also, you know, another reason is preserving calm during a rare crisis. And so those are all the whys on why we need to constantly relook at redefining and refining our process and our procedures. And so we've started to do some research, and we've done a lot of it. And the book, The Anxious Generation, was kind of the really strong point in really making us rethink our current practices and how we could do better. And if, and, and there's so many, I mean, you could just Google search this and find tons and tons of topics and research out there. And if you go to the next slide, it kind of talks about what we always do when we're kind of approaching a subject that we're unsure about is what is our community standard? And so we really took The Anxious Generation. We read it as an administrative council. We had lots of discussions about it, about the many of the topics and conversations around it. And then we had a community book read that was at the library. And as you can see from the picture, and many of you were there, it was really well-attended and really great, great conversations. And then the Board of Ed retreat, last week moved to today. So kind of continuing this discussion, right? And so what are the next steps? And, and, you know, that's what Cody and Paul are here too, to kind of continue to talk about, continuing the student discussion, continuing to have family input, administrative team, we're always keeping this, you know, talking about this and how we're, we're operating as a, as a school district, right? Not a district of schools, making sure that it makes sense on how we progress throughout school. And then updating handbooks as needed. And Steve's done some Zoom workshops with staff to get their feedback as well, and so we're kind of constantly seeking input. And so we're looking at potential solutions. And so as we redefine, is that in kindergarten through eighth grade, is that personal communication devices are off and away during school hours?
That includes lunch.
And recess.
And recess.
And, I mean, is that the way it is now? And so if a student has their phone out at lunch or at.
Yeah, that, we immediately interrupt that. So that'll be consistent for us, no change there.
That will be the expectation moving up through eighth grade.
Do you feel like, for obviously incoming sixth graders, they won't know any different?
Correct.
For some of the ninth graders, part of the book is also, you know, no phones, more free time. We can't really offer more free time at school, but I just wonder, to the same point of like, when you're trying to break a habit, like add something in when you're taking something away, do you feel like there will be a need to provide more social activity? Not, I don't mean outside of lunch, but I mean like during lunch, like for those students who are relying on their phone because they're anxious to make a friend or don't have a friend, do you think, feel like, if you think back to when phones were in middle school, do you mean like, do, do we need to put it, put in more encouragement to like, okay, yes, you don't want much to be structured, but at the same time, like everybody go play basketball, everyone go play whatever, you know, to build connections? I'm rambling, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Sure. I think in turn it will build in some more free play, right? Because they won't necessarily be on their devices as much. I don't think it will impact recess as much as maybe one would think. I think currently, sixth and seventh grade students are required to go outside when the weather's good on a regular basis. And the vast majority that are out there are interacting with each other in some sort of fashion, not necessarily on the phone. For some, definitely it will be a change. There are a handful that find themselves at the picnic tables or the benches and are playing video games. Sadly, we're very limited in space out there. If you've been on our playground slash, will we dock? It's, it's, yeah, it's unfortunate that we don't have more green space, and we can't do anything about that. I do wonder if we'll need to increase some of the equipment that we have available for kids.
That was my next question.
We've done a little bit of that over the last couple of years in terms of more four-square, more six-square volleyball courts, some of those things that are out there. But we might need to think about helping students with options of, of things that they want to play when they're outside. In terms of recent, or in terms of lunch, I think it will feel different for students, but it won't be the first time during their day when they have some unstructured time to interact with each other. Where phones aren't necessarily a part of that, because I do think we have times during our day where that is part of what we do a little bit. We also have a very tight commons area, which doesn't allow a lot, in a positive way, doesn't allow, from a positive standpoint, doesn't allow a lot of time away from peers. They can't sort of put themselves off to a side somewhere because we just don't have any space. So there's a lot of them being on their phone during it, but there's also a fair amount of interaction. So it will definitely be a change. It will absolutely be a change for them. Because if nothing else, the things that they're doing during that lunchtime won't involve their phone. And now a lot of it does, we're gonna shoot a little video of ourselves, we're gonna take some pictures, we're gonna send a message to that table over there and see if they get it, there's my back. So that, or, or like that person who's right there and see if they can get back. So it'll be different, yeah, for sure. We'll have to set them up for some success, but I'm confident we can do it.
I'm also confident. I'm just curious about it. So then also, you know, our sixth graders may not have phones, but I'm sure all the eighth graders, not all, but nearly all will. And are, is it gonna be similar to the IC that they just are in the lockers?
Yes, very much so. The, the beauty of it is, most of my colleagues in the area, in the principal group that I meet with, this is the norm. So being able to learn from, from them and have conversations with them over the past six to eight months has been really helpful in terms of the things that work and the things that, that have not worked for them for districts who have had this in place for, you know, five, six, seven, eight years. Yeah.
We do think of it as a, like a, you know, being older, like is this, you know, an unrealistic or unrealistic expectation? It's funny, because Paul and I were just talking beforehand to my son, who's eighteen, right? Just freshman in college. He just subbed a couple of days at the, at the middle school over his spring break, and that was the first thing he got in the car and said is, I can't believe everybody on their phones during lunch. Like, they should not be doing that. That's what, you know, I mean, and he kind of went on about it, but, like, so it's not even just a, a parent perspective looking at it. I think that it was, it seemed.
And while not perfect, the transition that we implemented this year went very smoothly, all things considered. Yeah. So, another step in the right direction.
And we talked a lot about phones, what else for devices out there? Yeah. I think that's the one that, when it comes to buying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Chromebooks technically is a way to communicate, right? As well, we have ways of monitoring student Chromebooks, whether it's just active practicing around a room or class-wide or some of those types of things. So that one, I don't see a big hurdle there. The watches piece will be something to figure out for sure.
I have a question for you. From like a student services standpoint, especially middle school, personal experience as a parent, with two kids going through middle school, which was a really hard time for them, and also mental health issues, relying on being able to get ahold of a parent when you don't want to go talk to someone at the school and you're sitting in the bathroom. So like, I can see how this would be good to make them so that there's, you know, they have to go to a staff person to talk and say, I need to get ahold of somebody, which would be good so that staff know what's going on. But the instances where, no, I'm not gonna do that. So like, I'm just thinking of it from that perspective as well, like, so outreach to kids, like, you know, if you're, just to kind of address that piece as well, like, you know, do you see, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and, and I think we're, we deal with that now, right? And kind of continuous, and, and I'll kind of say how, how I see it, and you can jump in too, but a lot of times, kids will keep their phones, they'll choose to actually keep their phone in the office or in student services, and then they'll go to those locations to make the phone call, and then they're getting to check in with an adult, they're getting to check in with a staff member, there's a communication there, and then they can use it.
Okay, perfect. That was kind of what I was thinking too, is if there's a place they could have that phone if they need to.
Maybe kids, if certain students would, I would say, I'm gonna call them individualized plans, but to that point, right? Whether we've, whether we have procured a phone for a few days because someone wasn't using it appropriately, which happens, you know, occasionally.
Sure.
Or, you know, a student service is a connection, like, you know, they feel like, hey, I can go there and make that call and, you know, I know we're not going over the highest, but no, I also think there's ways for us to, we've seen a lot of success with Suso and having QR codes and really pushing out there. I mean, our Suso stuff has increased. And so thinking creatively, but how can we provide opportunities for students to like seek help, whether it's something that's written in their Chromebook that they can quickly, quickly fill out so student services see it, they're not calling anybody. Like, there, there's certain things I think we can do to get creative, to still communicate, give that student that sense of safety, but also be able to have that private and be able to communicate. So I think there's certainly ways that we can, we've already talked about, you know, put something in place for those students.
When we look at nine twelve, right? It's taken it one step, one step, right? And, and if you, if you've read the book and participated in it, it's all about progression, right? Teaching progressive skills. And so when we're really looking at nine twelve, it's communication devices are often put away, stored in a school-issued storage space, from bell-to-bell during instructional time.
Yeah, I think that the shift right now, right now, we have a pretty inconsistent practice where my high school students here can probably attest to where one classroom is, you walk in, the teacher's thing, the lockers right there, put in, that's the expectation, they walk in, get it. Next teacher you're going to, it's fine if it's in your backpack. Next teacher you walk into, yeah, put it in the hotel, but we'll see, and then halftime they go. Right, it's, it's pretty hit or miss whether it's been consistent. I think one thing for us about finding consistency, and then being able to just kind of, I think when you have a consistent practice, one, it's easier to manage and oversee as opposed to kind of who's doing what, when and where. And it's also like that professional discretion of the instructor, with Chromebooks, with some other pieces, they have a lot of, they can do all the things there. And then I think the biggest, the biggest conversation yet that I was still kind of working is like study hall staff, what does that look like? And we have kids that are leaving for either prep, I mean, there's a lot of, my high schools are, it's this living beast that breathes and kids come and go, and I think, I like that. I think that means I got kids out in the community doing things, we got students engaged in different ways that aren't traditional, and all four are finding different ways to do high school differently. And, but what does it look like with this and how do we keep students still like fully engaged? You know, I think that even, I've never seen more UKR in my life played until I got to like this year, and then like, there's a lot of UKR being played, and not to say that there aren't phones around, but there is, there's UKR all over, and or card games, right? Which, even the cafeteria, like while we've, we've changed policies a little bit this year, not that phones are gone, they are absolutely still there. But you see, you see conversations, there's different, you know, conversations happening. And I think any way that we can find those replacement things, those things that for students to engage, and the book does get into that, kind of get to high school, and all of a sudden you pivot from, yeah, cell phone, but no, so like the social, you know, the book talks about that progression, and as a high school, that's our challenge. How do we kind of acknowledge that progression while also knowing that different expectation for a senior is, can be challenging for, I mean, we already have a lot of the twelfth graders can, if they're passing classes, can like leave for study hall and somebody's saying, so how do we kind of make sure that we're in the vein of what we're doing, but keeping kids engaged with the work that's at hand, you know? And I, a couple of years ago, I had a principal coach come through, walk, he goes, your, your classrooms are too quiet, there needs to be more talking, there needs to be more kids doing things. I think we've heard that a little more this year, with the career and we're talking, engaging. And I think being able to kind of tighten up just a little bit more on that next year will also help to balance some of that out. But yeah, I mean, the stat, I think the stat and study hall piece will be a piece that we still have to kind of figure out the nuances of it, but there'll be some challenges that all the days, but.
Put payphones back in the school.
I had that conversation back one day, you would like, I would call like one hundred o'clock and go, Cody, pick up back. And my parents knew where to pick me up, because I couldn't, and I'd set the call, but they knew where to pick me up, so, it was a bunch of payphones, so.
There's actually my question, is how parents a lot of the time count on that access to be able, when plans change, or do you have different family situations or things like that? Have you seen since you've adapted, you know, more calls to the office, or how are they, how are they communicating?
Well, because they can, they can get their phone during passing time. I mean, it's a, you can't go without your phone for sixty-five minutes, it's, you have another problem that we can manage.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, they're getting it during passing time, they're getting them during lunch, and we'll have families, parents call the main office, stop in, drop things off. You know, it's, it can be a little old school, right? We don't have the big purple printer, machine things, but you can call the office and we'll get the message here. And so I think being able to like do some of those pieces, but they're still getting the messages because they have during passing time, they gotta drink lunch. And, you know, those, if something's super urgent, you know, people will call us or.
I just think about the adaptivity at the middle school level, that if it's gonna be like not accessible, if, how are you planning on handling that part of it?
Yeah, I mean, there's still a lot of ways to communicate with school from home, right? And, and we're not saying kids can't bring them into the building. So if there's something that's gonna change after school at three twenty-five, when students check those, if they've gotten a text from mom or dad or big brother or sister and plans have changed, they'll still be able to see those. It's not that they're not gonna make their way into the building. It's just, but those types of things are, are also not things that students need to know at eleven-thirty in the morning, right? And if they do, there's a phone in every room in this building, all of us are checking email on a very regular basis. Families can even go in and obviously mark their student's absent in Infinite Campus live, we see that, so we know, oh, okay, they're leaving print appointment at this time, sort of thing. So there's still lots and lots of ways to communicate, which really is the better way for, for us to have kids, especially if they're leaving during the day, is for that to go through the office so that we can arrange to get them here rather than someone showing up and wondering why, so. And at the high school at that point, we have a lot of times where parents, students will talk to each other and no one but the school knows, and then we don't know what the student did, we mark them absent, but we haven't got a call from a parent, now we're searching bathrooms, we're searching around, right? That, that becomes a safety issue, right? Is when, and I think at the high school with, we do run into that. And also, like, we, we've talked to some students, we haven't engaged our students fully yet on part of this piece. I think as you saw, the next step is really being able to have some conversations with students and get that voice. We know most of them are gonna say, I'm not gonna be an idiot and think like, oh, they're gonna love some, but, and, you know, as I have, we've had conversations previously, so I'm not a fool to think that they're all like, yeah, please, take them from, you know, I'll hand them in at seven AM and give them back at four. But I do think be able to engage in like, what does that look like for them? What are their needs? What are the things they're worried about? What are the things that we can help kind of work through or alleviate some of those frustrations or concerns to? And those are the things we need to engage with our students, how to get their, get their voice, because that's the benefit of working in high school, which I, you can talk to students and really problem solve and, and really kind of get into it, which I, which I love, and that helps us have that like community, that community component of the problem solving we're doing, so.
It says that they're gonna be stored in the school-issued storage space. If I remember correctly, we did not purchase those for all of the classrooms when we rolled this up.
Every high school classroom has one to them. Yeah, the last two, because we got those two or three years ago. So we've been just kind of like, hey, do you need one? Or we've got a couple extra, this one broke, we kind of refill a stockpile and go through. So every classroom has one available, they don't all use them right now, because as I kind of stated earlier, but we do have enough and, you know, we've kind of slowly can, we'll purchase some before the end of the school year and end of the budgetary season. There's just things at the end of the school year, just we've got some extra ones left over. And, you know, they're not charging for the students, they're also not like blocking off signal, and so, you know, they're just lockers and things. But I think what they've done is, we've talked as teachers, I'm like, it's an extra thing, what an opportunity to go walk around and get to know students, this the other weekend was, see how their day was, see what they're up to, and have that checkpoint while you walk around and collect it too. And so some teachers have used it for attendance, like, oh, now I know who's here, who's not here. And, you know, those pieces too. And, you know, those pieces too. So certainly some things to figure out, but I feel like we're on the right track today. You're right.
It's good also redo, I mean, from a parental standpoint, not getting all the texts, hey, I changed my mind. I want shirt I wanna wear today. Run me over that, that blue one now. You'll see me in the office next time.
Wait, are you saying that this is a common occurrence?
I've had a conversation with just a couple of teachers, so it certainly isn't representative, but we're all for more stricter enforcement or stricter restrictions on it. It is, so I think I know the answer, but how do you, if faculty feels about continuing to come back? Do you think there are any that are worried or don't wanna deal with it or in favor?
The vast majority, no, this is what we need to do. I don't think it's a, it's not a question. The questions maybe are a little bit about how or what exactly does that look like? But I think we all recognized the need a while ago about engagement and step one took care of that. But we see what it's doing to our kids in terms of their mental health. Even just the constant needing to have access to someone else, whether it's a parent or other students. It's convenient, but it's not good for you. And I think we all recognize that as adults that get to work with our mothers, yeah. And I think at the high school, we've, we've got some staff that feel that as they get high school, or, you know, they might have some differing opinions. But I think they also, they see the benefit of having that piece of it. I think at the high school, it's just a matter of like, whose job is it to engage when maybe that student isn't necessarily wanting to, or they put a burner phone in, or they put a case in, or, you know, or whatever it is. And, you know, we have systems in place right now that we're using. We have step by step, very public, kids like, we, we know, it's not like we don't deal with it now. And so I think it's just about trying to give opportunity for teachers. I guess it can be uncomfortable. And we have a, we have a policy about don't bring expensive things to school, right? And we, we could probably rely more on that and actually talk more to families about that. Like, that's not just talking about your baseball bats and your gloves and your whatever. It's also your cell phone. It's gonna be a thousand dollar. That also is included, right? And that's the responsibility of the student. That's not my responsibility as a principal to make sure your phone is safe for me at the end of the day. Like, you bring it. That's the risk you take as a student. That's not my risk as a principal. And I think relying on that policy along with our current expectations, I think we'll be in a just fine place. Not that I wanna get over policy and, and kind of punitive on it, but I think it's things that we do have, are a place that we can rely on too.
It's gonna be interesting to hear in all those appointments.
From a student perspective, I think it's entirely appropriate. I mean, in middle school, I was using my phone and I was using my phone to take pictures of my friends and send it to them. So useless essentially. But as a high schooler, like interacting with my family, I have a lot more responsibility. Like during my study hall, I could like run an errand for my mom. Like during passing time, I think that communication is important to be able to have. As well as communicating with friends. I hate to sound dramatic, but I do like make plans for lunch with my friends, like in the morning during passing period. And again, this has been the standard to have our phones put away during class time. Most of my classes do that already. So I, I don't see like a big change in this, but I do know that it is important to be able to communicate sometimes with our families as well during passing period. Again, with like having our family be able to like bring something to school. I mean, the amount of times that I've forgotten like an instrument or my homework at home and then I had my mom be able to bring it. Because I can text her after class or before school or something like that, that's very useful, so I think, I think it's perfectly fine.
Board members, we're also fortunate to have another student in the audience today who happened to attend a program last week and is working on a Girl Scout project in this regard. Would you be open to sharing any of your findings?
So I'm not sure. So I'm not sure. I'm currently in the process of developing my Girl Scout Gold Award. And I really hope to be involved in like decreasing the amount of time we spend on our phones and social media and then increasing peer, peer interactions and stuff like that. And as a student, I definitely think that having the phones in the home locker is really beneficial because, I mean, let's be honest, we're all like really addicted. But I think in middle school especially, it's actually more important to have the lockers than in high school. Because I know from experience in high school, not all the students, but most of them are a lot more responsible and can have that time and can manage their time away from their phone like correctly and make it beneficial to them. But in middle school, like fresh out of middle school, I'm a ninth grader. Last year I was on my phone in class, like. And I think if we maybe even invested in some of those phone lockers that we use at the high school, it would be really beneficial for students' academic like stuff. Because I know my grades have improved since last year because now I pay attention more, so.
Good luck with your question. You're speaking in front of the school board. Board members, I, just to put a bow on the conversation here tonight, first of all, thank you for your input. Thank you for allowing us an opportunity to continue to engage our community on this topic. There's work yet to be done. As we heard Principal Christiansen say, that we have evolved to the point where we currently are at as a basis for administration's decision. However, we recognize that this message, this plan may not be amenable to everyone. And I think what we're looking for from the board here tonight, among any additional questions you may have, is how would you like us to proceed? Would you like this to be a formal vote of the Board of Education? Or would you like this to be a part of what we've already been doing and just continue to keep you apprised of its developments? Happy to go in either direction. We work at the pleasure of the board, but we also want to make certain that we do move forward because the success of this year's implementation, I think, is due in very large measure to the fact that at about this time last year, we were in the process of communicating and communicating even more to families. And one of those pieces is gonna have to do with the code of student conduct and being able to adjust that and get to critical. So happy to go in any direction the board wants. We just wanna make certain that we're honoring what you, what your intentions are. To Paul's point earlier, you know, you've established the what in terms of the, what you see as student belonging, what you see as student engagement. And we've attempted up to this point to help massage the how. But we're at a bit of a crossroads and we welcome your feedback.
Can you, can you just clarify, I think you may have addressed this before, but nothing in here is, is in like policy, policy, right? And no, no changes in here would impact anything in there, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Unless we outlaw smartwatches. Then we probably need to file. Does this include staff as well?
The definition of instructional time does include staff in a study hall. I think we've, I think that's part of the conversations that look like for us yet too, right? And I think these are potential solutions. I think I, or we probably could be using staff better, to be honest. I think that it's, you're, you're gonna play, I think at high school, right, you're the 80, 15, five rule, right? Eighty percent who they're supposed to, 15, need a little help, and five always need kind of an extra level. I think that's a pretty, a decent standard. I think staff is probably the one time of the day that we really struggle to see engagement. I think that's the piece. And, you know, there could be a variety, I think, part of that too is engaging students. I'm like, what are you doing during staff? What do you need during staff? Is staff useful every day? Like, I think those are the pieces we haven't quite nerded in, because when I walk the halls during, well, actually I've been walking, I just stand the halls now. They're much quieter and out there, holly enough. Is, like when I'm out there and about, I just see a lot of just kind of, you know, zombie scrolling, as I call it. And so like, what is that like? What's the need for that? We have some students that are engaging, right? But like, what does that look like during that time, so.
I do think that there's some conversation that we need to continue to have about students who are repetitively involved in this behavior. And we've started that. We approach things, you probably guessed this in the 10 years that I've had the pleasure to work in this community, is to seek cause in an accepting way. Help me to understand why you have the cell phone when you know it's against the practices. There's something we need to be aware of, you know, and not looking for punitive, really a progressive approach to student compliance with the expectation. But there will be, guaranteed, a little dumbling or two who will make a choice that will get us to the fourth or fifth time where we just have to say, we're done. And you will likely hear from people who are gonna be displeased with that. And we just need to know that we're all, just like when moms and dads have conversations around the kitchen table, that we as a school community are aware of what the expectations are so that we can hold everyone to account. That means also not just expecting our administrators to be doing this, but every faculty and staff member will have the expectation to help us gain compliance in this regard as well.
A month ago at the high school, we're, we're doing something new next year called the Viking Reset, which a lot of us, we were on attendance and kind of the impact of attendance and tolerance, but also cell phones on kind of impact of being able to participate in certain things. Go to dances, go to games, go to certain things, leave during study hall, leave during lunch, which we do a little bit now. But we're kind of, we're gonna be beefing up, put a couple more teeth on something called Viking Reset next year. This is also gonna be part of it too. So just some pieces that we've been working on for the last two months that we're gonna be rolling out here the next month to staff and then students and families too.
In my opinion, I don't feel like we need to vote as an official policy. But I do think that I wanna convey, and I'm guessing all of my fellow board members feel the way, same way that you all have our complete support in this and that we think this is incredibly important for our students. And it is like almost everything in education, very nuanced and different at each level. So we may end up to you all figuring out the how and specifics, but we very much appreciate the updates. And even related to what you just shared about the middle school, like maybe we do need to invest in some phone lockers. You know, I mean, I defer to you, but, and your staff, but I, I remember from the book, you know, I think it was in the book, or maybe it was in the, what was the one that spoke last week? I forgot her name. Anyways, but the phones are just as distracting if it's in your pocket. You know, like it needs to not be on your body, so whatever we need to do to make those kinds of things happen. Anyways, I don't know what you want.
The only thing I would add to that, and I turn my question back to you, the reason we would vote on it as a board or say do anything as a board is to show public support. So would that be helpful? I think what I'm hearing from you tonight is, I saw a lot of heads nod in agreement, in consensus. But certainly if there's something that brings cause for concern, we wanna hear that because that's another data point that helps us inform our decisions.
I do have a question on that other document that's attached about the enforcement.
Yeah, the part that's not ready yet for prime time.
Yeah, so that is what is a typo. Word, new word that I didn't know, but I'm pretty sure it's a typo. Just out of curiosity, is there a reason that nine through 12 and six through eight have different level? Like this offense for, for six through twen, or nine through 12 and six through eight are different. Like you get, they're very different. And so like, I have a kid who goes to the high school every day for Spanish. So when she goes to Spanish, is she, and she decides to pull out her phone and get in trouble, is she in the nine through 12 plan or is she in the six through eight?
She's a middle schooler over there.
So, but.
Just because it's a building doesn't mean that she's in that grade.
Why, why does it need to be different, I guess is my question.
Because this, because this has become different.
So that I think.
Currently, currently, well, we're in the weeds a little bit.
Yeah.
Currently, they're very much aligned. They're all, they're, they're essentially identical because of what the expectation is, is identical. Whereas with this, with this change with K8, the phones should not be out at all. Whereas now they are out during passing time sometimes, and that can spill over into a classroom. In this proposed solution, the phones would not be on middle school students' app all from 8:00 o'clock until 3:25.
I get that part, but the offenses like second offense for high school is one to three days and second offense for middle school is like the end of the day, like that part of it. So what, like, why isn't first offense, second offense, third offense the same level of crime depending on what grade you're in?
Because I think the first blush at.
I'm just curious.
No, I'm glad you're asking. The truth we told is that we just wanted you to know that we're working on something. And while we don't have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, once we do come to consensus on it, we absolutely will share with the board and we'll share broadly with the community as well. We're gonna need their help in holding to account their own children.
And I think it would be easier for parents, we have kids across multiple, if it was, like, I get like, six through eight, keep your phone in your backpack locker, wherever we decide it is, but like offense wise?
I will say one thing we talked about though, where things may be different a little bit and then we can sort of move on. We may need to do things a little bit differently given the way that our kids travel out of our building. Our middle school students are not traveling on their, on their own. They're either going on a bus or someone might be picking them up. So how we give a device back to a kid in middle school might need to look a little different than a student who we know is getting in their own vehicle on a dragon home. Where the convenience factor of a parent potentially coming to pick something up changes a bit just based off of
Yeah.
their mobility and how they leave us at the end of the day. So there are some differences between a, yeah.
Yeah.
But anyway, yeah, like you said, first blush.
One general comment on enforcement that I will say is, this is gonna be, it is a demand on teachers and faculty and staff. I wouldn't be too lenient. That's my standpoint of like, less is more in my mind. You have, the rule's the rule. Don't make it something that's too onerous on you all tapped to police.
Yeah.
Thank you, brothers.
Well done.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Very much appreciated.
All righty, we have one action item this evening, Consider Legislative Advocacy Letter in Support of Special Education Reimbursement Funding. Carly.
Yeah, so the letter, she's actually gonna put it up right now, we reviewed in the community last KAL meeting. And the focus of it is to advocate for special education funding, as we've talked about before. We think that this is both the highest priority for us financially, given what Joel was explaining earlier about the revenue, the impact of an increased revenue limit and probably the most likely to have decent bipartisan support to at least do something in the legislature during this fiscal year. In fact, I was listening to an update from WASB last week where they talked a little bit about some of the public hearings that are going on right now and how there's a huge presence for, from educators and particularly around special education funding. So we have this letter here that would go to our, in this draft, it's not from, we have it.
Thank you. With the board's permission, we'd like to have it serve two roles. One, a letter on behalf of the entire board. And if this were to be approved tonight, I would love to get your signatures on an accompanying page of what it includes. But then we also recognize we all, we wanna have the feedback of our community, business partners as well as faculty and staff, that we also have, this is a bit of a template that people could massage and make their own. It serves two purposes.
One thing, I mean, one other thing I'll point out is that we did, in, in the day at the Capitol, we, we focused on two issues. We focused on special education, but we also in general talked about increases, keeping up increases in the revenue limit and other spendable resources to keep tied to inflation. And so originally we did have two letters drafted, but I think we, we realized that if, again, we're asking for too many things and it's too easy for them to pick on one and say, sure, I'll give you an inflationary increase on this little tiny thing over here and not what your, your main point is. So we decided really just like focus on one, one important main priority. And as we, as we have the draft up here, one thing to point out, Scott was just telling me that we can actually say the school district transferred over 3.9 million. That may be a change we should make.
I have two things.
Please.
One, in the, that all students lose paragraph or sentence, there's two periods. And then, and then the only other one I have is we have fiscal year as FY. People in the public might not know that means fiscal year, so I would just spell that out. Just because they don't, we live and breathe it, so I'm like, that means fiscal year, but they might not. Those remind me too. Otherwise, I think this letter's fantastic.
Yes. I agree. Love the letter. I had a couple of just specific ideas to bring up. Well, I'll do the ticket tag first. Wondering if, on that all students lose paragraph there, wondering if we could make, split that last part into two sentences. At a time of historic state, surplus is comma, continuing to have to real, reallocate resources seems especially egregious, period. An infusion of special education funding could allow for.
I think we should add more commas.
Like that?
Yes. Then on the, on the last paragraph, the doing so at this point points to the failing comment. And I'm wondering, rather than adjust that sentence, I feel like we addressed that in the previous paragraph. So I'm wondering if there's a need for that whole sentence of the, given the continued surplus in tax revenue.
Does the last sentence get rid of it?
No, I like the last sentence. I would get rid of the middle sentence. This one would take a second for me to weed through, because I feel like it's covered well in that previous paragraph. And then doing so will apply to asking them to increase.
Something went wrong. I think removing that would help to maintain the message while breaking down the tone. The other, because the other word that I was looking at was egregious in that previous, I tend to say burdensome, not egregious.
A softer?
Just, we're, again, we need to, yeah, just a softer tone. Yeah, exactly, be friends, as much as we can. That's a good, yeah.
I almost argue that we almost don't need to have it in there, period. This money for special education should be given to us regardless if there's a surplus or not. Do we really need to point it out to them, something they already should know that they have used surplus?
Sometimes it's better to point it out, though, with stuff like this, just because you never know.
Reiterating.
Who knows what?
That's the interesting, especially if community members are sending this out, that may let more people know that we have extra money. One of the things too is the legislators had extraordinary turnover this year, and while there's been a lot of news about the surplus, there's a lot of new assembly members who need continual reorganization on these topics.
To the point of any shred of partisanship, I did wonder about saying please support Governor Evers' proposal, and I realize that that's his proposed budget. Is there any other way around saying?
A proposal?
Yeah.
A proposed budget?
Yeah, it's a good point. Poor police support increasing special education.
And we all agree with cutting this one.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure it out. We should have better just...
You did talk about...
Do, one thing, and I'm sorry, I thought I had brought this up before, but maybe I didn't. The letter that we all signed when the Dade County boards were here talked about 90, a gradual increase from 60 to 90. Do you want to just tweak that to say reimbursement rate to 60 with an eventual increase to 90 to align with that?
I would say no. Well, I agree that it aligns. This is a mask today. I just don't want to give them an easy thing to pick out and say, well, that's ridiculous, so no.
Yeah. And if I remember correctly, we hear when we were at the Day at the Capitol, that no one is going to agree to something that the next legislator, they're not going to...
Right, right, right.
To your point about turnover.
We can keep it really focused, I mean, we could get them to go halfway.
Yeah.
This is a huge...
No, I, yeah, I recognize.
I understand what you're saying, and I agree, but I think we want to keep this letter to what are we asking for.
I have two more, and then I'll shut up. The, I know, this is all great, it's about, again, like filling in the gaps, maybe or spilling it out a little bit. We talked about how we transferred over $3.9 million in the most recent fiscal year to fill the void. That's $3.9 million of our local tax levy, correct?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if you spell it out of like, you know, this isn't just coming from some pool again, just to underscore like...
A secret stash of money?
Exactly, exactly. Like, this is coming from your constituents' pockets to pay for this. And then the last one is again on the top, to the first graph. I understand if we wouldn't want to get into this, because it's such a nice clear paragraph it is, actual costs associated with meeting the needs of students with disabilities. I think we'll leave it at that. Wait. Did we take out a piece here that said something about the other ask?
We did.
We had a second letter that we brought to committee and decided to...
No, this is, this is great then, yeah, because I think it was like a this rather than that was spelled out initially. And then I was going to say we need to talk about the actual cost, but I think this rewarding is perfect.
Do we want to say we're advocating, or are we requesting? I mean, I get that we're advocating, but I think, while we don't want to be, we don't want to change our tone, I think we do want to say we are requesting this.
Can, since we changed erroneous to burdensome, can we, it's not, it doesn't seem as special, it is a special.
Yeah.
Can we change the seems to is?
It is, we're saying that.
Right, where you first said.
Oh, it's a reality, it is a special. Yes. I use the word egregious quite frankly because this is the 15th letter ever. Over 30 years. I hear you.
You could put it, you could put it up in your mouth.
We shouldn't be having this conversation, we shouldn't have to be fighting for our special right, we should, it's needed, right? This is the national law.
Can we change that first sentence? Do we have to take out requesting for? Just say requesting special education funding?
Okay.
Could we possibly put a comma after surpluses in the third paragraph, second line?
Yes. Look at you.
You have no idea what kind of group you just joined.
He is going to get you a T-shirt.
I would love that.
I have a T-shirt all about the Oxford.
Yeah, and I'll have a conversation with you about that.
Yeah, I used to wear it when Adam sat across from me, so he could see my love of the Oxford. It's not as impactful, since he sits next to me now. I see you, I see you.
Could we also, I realize a general fund is an appearance statement, but Adam made the point from our local taxpayers. Is that, or is that too esoteric?
Yeah, so we would include not just our taxpayers, but we would also include the state aid. Scott, I think you hear...
Yeah, I really like that idea, Adam, about having a general fund, something like that. If we can, it said $3.9 million from our local general fund, I think is where it was.
This might add here.
If we say local general operating fund, that's spot on because it's not unbalanced, it's truly from our general fund operating budget. And that includes, to your point, that includes all of our sources that make up our budget, not grant-related. And those funds can come from all sources, including our local tax levy, right? Major portion of our budget. General state aid, another massive portion of our running budget. But I really think it's important to put in operating fund because it is truly our operation. Thank you for letting me.
Well, the other thing that I just thought of when I was reading the last paragraph, we don't say anything about some sufficient versus some certain. Do we need to say that when we say raise the rate and make sure that it is...
It wasn't one of the original letters, I'm not sure if it was taken out.
I think, yeah, I can define that in the letter that you have.
Oh, wait, maybe, oh, no, it's at the top, it's at the top.
But it's out of this one.
Yeah.
So I think, I agree with you, we should put that in this.
I just wondered at the very end. Yeah, do you do it where it specifies the 60% and some, some certain is a very, or some...
Sufficiency.
Yeah. It's a very esoteric term. I wonder if we do it by in the last paragraph where it says 60% and we say, like, make it plain language and say 60% of our actual costs.
Right, because people fill this up again, they're not going to know.
Oh, the legislators don't. We learned that the moment where they...
Yeah, that's true.
They were like, we, we... Yeah.
Or say, which is the definition of sufficient?
Yeah.
Again, maybe not so much for the legislators, but for people that would...
Do you have to contrast that with the current 30 then? Which is not...
Well, it says estimated, current estimated 30.
30% reimbursement rate on a first come, first basis.
If I'm reading that as an outsider, I think that means it could be 29, it could be 31, not an estimated amount.
Which is, which is some sufficient.
Which is...
Exactly.
Thank you.
It just sounds a little clunky.
So flower man. Me use too much words.
I think you got it.
I did.
You know what you're like.
Yeah, I'll take the lead.
Play on, Joe.
But I think I hear what you're saying because we're looking to go some sufficient from some certain, and the 30% right now is, right?
Yeah, it's not, it's not 30.
Estimated, that's why I put down estimated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I don't want to make sense.
Like I said, that comes across more like a rounding issue than a definitional 30%.
And we still don't know what our actual reimbursement rate is.
29.4%?
Right, yeah, right now they're projecting, so to answer your question, maybe use the word projected.
Well, I just wonder if we could even say, and I don't have the right words, but to say like, the legislator said that we're always supposed, what were we supposed to get, 32% or something, or 33?
32.4% last year.
But we actually are getting projected of 29. Somehow to say like, we're not even getting what you said you would give us. But I don't know if that's a lot of words, I don't know if that's worth adding.
How about if you just put from the published 30% and then in parentheses, actual estimate, actual expected or projected, 29.4%? I mean, it will at least make people reading it, wait a second, what does that mean? Maybe.
I think ultimately it's provide adequate funding to back the percentage that they say districts will actually receive. And that's what some sufficient is.
Right. Was it 29.4%?
No, it's, I'm production right now, I can double check, 29.16%.
Thank you. Let's double check that.
Just say 29.
Yeah.
Or does that just...
10 commas, 32.4%.
It's a little clunky. And I think if people don't understand what they're asking for, they're not going to set it up.
We'll take it back. I think so.
The 32.4% was last year's actual percentage?
Do we, except the first, I haven't said anything about 30, I think it is. Okay. I was wondering if we just say, either that or we have bullet point increase, we like some good bullet points, like what you should have given us, what we actually got.
We could just put in cage match 30% first, first serve, I mean...
I don't, I think, I think it gets the point across, and I think that like, the legislature isn't going to be in the weeks of the letter, they're going to be like, special education, special education.
Yes, exactly. They're not going to go through with the fight to go and do any like research on our numbers, what, and all the details we put into it.
Sadly, no. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve that, or any other?
Make a motion to...
Second. Pushed by Sarah, second by Leah. Any further discussion, anyone? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
May I pass this around so that everyone could please sign it?
To have Catherine, who are going...
Oh, Peter.
Number eight, citizen comments from my house. Future agenda items, anything you're interested in discussing, please let Dr. Snell know or I know. And our schedule of next meetings, anything to...
Yes, just one small change that occurred here prior to our meeting tonight, that's the education committee meeting will move to 5:15, not 5:30 on May 5. And then that evening, we will also host at 6:00 PM the board reorganization of what next, next year.
Number 11. Post to Jack.